Tonight, we would like to discuss how you can hopefully support an effort to help CMH continue providing high-quality health care. Some of you here this evening may not be in support of the proposed tax issue. It's not our intent necessarily to change your mind, but rather to provide you with answers that will help you make an informed decision after ballot close. Our hope is that everyone at this meeting will be treated with respect and courtesy, and will conduct themselves in a friendly, civil manner. To that end, following our presentation, when we open the meeting for questions from the floor, we're going to ask that you limit yourself to one question each time you are recognized. Once your question has been answered or addressed, we will allow then someone else to an opportunity to ask a question. We will continue on that matter until either all the questions have been answered, or we reach the end of our allotted time as published in the announcement. If at the end of the time you have unanswered questions, please feel free to visit one or more of us before leaving. We will make every effort to stay on the topic, propose sales tax. Should we stray from the topic? It is my job to get us back on track. As an example, all of us have, at some point in our lives, had an unsatisfactory experience with business. Our forum tonight is not to address those or similar off-topic issues. Are there any questions there? With that, I'd like to have Curtis come up and give the presentation.
Good evening. I appreciate everybody making time to come this evening. My name is Curtis Hawkinson, and I'm fortunate to represent the 200 or so individuals at CMH here tonight. I've been fortunate to be here for 18 years, so I appreciate the opportunity to come before you to continue to examine the need for the sales tax for the support of the hospital and health care for Marshall County. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about, just a little bit about rural health care in general in our nation, and talk a little bit about the state of rural health care. And then lastly, kind of share some information about our community hospital here in Marysville, and some of the statistics that we have here to share with you. You know, in rural America, you know, obviously, I think we're all facing workforce shortages. I think many of us in Marshall County know that, you know, we all buy for the same population of workers, and so on and so forth, and, you know, everybody seems to be hiring. So there's just a lot of shortages when it comes to health care, whether we're looking for housekeepers, dietary personnel, nurses, so on and so forth. Doesn't seem like there's not a job category that we have that we're, you know, one person away from being short of staff. We know in rural healthcare, we take care of a lot of vulnerable populations. We take care of, you know, 65 and older population. We are more, we have more of those folks as a percentage of our total population. Generally, you see that in most counties. We know that in, at least, Marshall County, our per-county income is lower than the state average, and so that makes us qualifiers for a health professional shortage area because of that. And with that, you know, whether it's uninsured, or, you know, there's just, this creates, you know, more chronic illnesses and so on. Geography, we're a little bit better than most. We're not that far away from our tertiary hospitals. That's a good thing. So we're not quite as isolated as some maybe beyond western Kansas. And we also know that Marshall County, we have about a 10% uninsured rate here locally, and you'll see that in most counties in Kansas, and also in our nation. We've been trying to expand Medicaid for the state of Kansas. We're probably one of 10 states that have now expanded Medicaid, and that really closes the gap from, for people that can get insurance on the marketplace versus qualifying for Medicaid. There's about a 38% difference in income that qualifies you for Medicaid, what qualifies you for the marketplace. So Medicaid expansion hopes to, tries to create that, to eliminate that bubble in between that qualifies you for some form of health insurance as we go forward. Some other data points on rural challenges. We do, in rural America, have an incidence of heart disease that is 56% higher than you see in your metropolitan areas. We have lower respiratory disease, a 35% higher in your rural populations. We seem to face more accidental, unintentional injuries, and our cancer fatalities may have declined nationwide, but they fell at a slower rate in rural America. And there's a widening gap between almost three years of life expectancy between your urban and rural dwellers. As kind of illustrated here, you know, looking at some of the population kinds of things, over 65%, we have a higher percentage, like that says 69, it's kind of hard to read with the yellow, versus 33% in your urban areas. Diabetes has a higher prevalence. We have more veterans that we take care of compared to our urban counterparts. Access to primary care is generally lower in rural America. I don't believe that's the case here in Marshall County. I think we have great access to primary care. And then access to mental health is generally lower in your rural areas. Just looking at our graph from the states, and this kind of shows Medicare patients with six or more chronic conditions, and here, that's not going to get that small, but here's Marshall County right here. We actually have a little higher shade, which is 10% to 12% of our population of Medicare patients have six or more chronic conditions present. Obviously, you know, in many of our rural communities, we've, you know, the labor and delivery services have declined. Hospitals have either virtue by, either the population numbers have declined, so it makes labor and delivery as a service difficult. Almost 60% of the rural counties are without hospital-based obstetrics. And if you look between 2004 and 2014, over 200 rural maternity wards closed. Half the women in rural communities now have to travel more than 30 minutes to find a hospital that is offering maternity services. And just some graphic-wise of the decline of rural labor and delivery from 2010, at least half the hospitals, rural hospitals, provided obstetrics now about 40%. And likewise, even in the, they call them micro-politons, which are little larger communities, they've also declined with their labor and delivery services that are available. Here we have a kind of U.S. state graph of the places that have closed their labor and delivery. As I noted before, 40% of all rural hospitals have eliminated the service, and so now 60% less than, less than half of the nation's hospitals provide all these services today. And obviously, as they decline services, then obviously, more times to, longer times to get to the places that have services, and it just continues to add up as more places discontinue that service. Also looking at hospital closures in our nation, you know, 100, almost 150 rural hospitals have closed in 2010. Obviously, that creates a lack of access, maybe loss of jobs that the hospitals used to have. 46% of open rural hospitals are losing money. Many have negative margins. Some of those reasons, you know, reimbursement. Medicare still has us under sequestration, even though Medicare put in a critical access hospital program. I guess it's probably been 30 years ago, in the early 90s or mid-90s. We're supposed to get 101% of our cost for Medicare. Now we get 90, 99%, they locked off 2% for sequestration. Obviously, many areas have lost population. That's a reason for closure as well. And obviously, uninsured, if your population gets, you know, increase in your uninsured rates, go higher, obviously, that's going to have a strain on your rural hospital as well. And obviously, we're seeing more high deductible plans. You know, many $10,000 deductible, first dollar cost are also problematic for a lot of populations to be able to pay off their deductibles in an amount of time that is reasonable. And so that also has a burden to the local hospital as well. As I noted, 46% of the rural providers have negative operating margins. As you see there, Kansas seems to lead the way for their rural hospitals to have negative margins. I've got a slider that kind of tells us how many of those, but Kansas, you know, obviously, we have more rural hospitals in a lot of states. We have 80-some critical access hospitals in our state, and that's a big difference in a lot of hospitals that don't have that many rural hospitals. Hospitals in financial distress indicated that we have 15 at that time back in 2019. It's only gotten higher since then. We've had eight more closures in 2023. 700 hospitals are at risk of closing. Kansas has 62 of those 700 that are at risk of closing. And there's 360 hospitals that are at immediate risk, and Kansas has 31 of those. Eight Kansas hospitals have closed since 2015. Obviously, a closure of a hospital does not at all increase access to care. It does decrease it and requires more time to get to the nearest health care facility, and that only grows when we've got hospital closures. This is just kind of a graphic from 2019 to 2023 of our uncompensated care here at our hospital. Uncompensated care is our bad debt, and the ones that we send to collections. Bad debt and charity care are the two. People do apply for charity care. We have a process for that, and we also have the bad debt, some people that do not let us know where they're at with being able to pay a bill. If we don't hear from them, they generally will end up in collections versus if you're in charity care, you have a process to administer that. As you can see, from 2019, it's grown from a million up to recently, last three years, we've been at about $1.5 million in uncompensated care. Here's our operating income from 2019 to 2023. Obviously, 2020 and 2022, we did get, as most rural hospitals, most municipalities, school districts, the like, all got a lot of COVID monies. I think for hospitals, there are three phases. I think we received one phase of COVID monies. And I would say with COVID grants, I mean, you had to demonstrate the need, spend the money on the things you said you were going to spend it on. Then we have to file a audit to the federal government explaining what we spent the money on. So really, with the COVID money you received, you offset employee wages, and it helped offset some of the revenue loss by being closed. So they've had a process to make up for the revenue loss, and sort some other COVID-related pieces of equipment that we received during that time. So it was money that we saved and money that we spent. Sales tax for CMH, you know, just kind of look at the state of Kansas. 85% of the rural hospitals in Kansas receive some sort of tax support, either through a sales tax, or through a mill levy, or maybe they're part of a hospital district. And so it's become more customary and usual that hospitals do receive some sort of support. Olmega system down there receives about $1.8 million. Clay Center is a county hospital. They get a mill levy of about $600,000. The Niwaha County hospitals, 10 years ago, put a half-cent sales tax in for their county, and they split between the Sibetha and the Seneca hospitals of about 1.1. And the Washington County hospital does receive about $200,000. A half-cent sales tax is 50 cents on a $100 retail purchase. Sales tax for Marysville, just locally here in our community, will be, is 8.6%. I believe there's a city sales tax at 1% and the county at 1/2% plus the state makes it 8.6. If you look at other sales tax rates, in Seneca at 9%, Washington has 8.5%, Manhattan is about 8.95%, depending on where you're at in Manhattan, and Waumee Go is 9.25%. As noted, sales tax, you know, does not rest on property values and owners and citizens. So if anybody's traveling through Marysville and so on and so forth, they can help pay a little bit of the sales tax as well. We've been receiving about $1.1 million per year from that, and the half-cent sales tax will come up for a vote in another five years. We just will complete five years here in March, and so hence the reason to vote on it again. Just some other items of what we're seeing here locally. Obviously, we're all facing the very inflationary environment. It has affected our cash position. As we all know, whether it's buying insurance for your vehicles or your house insurance, similar for us as well. Our commercial property has went up about 25% recently, last couple of years, just pretty much everything that we purchase. And keeping up competitive with our wages for our staff, obviously, has included in that inflationary environment. Workforce competition continues to be challenging. Everybody is, you know, buying for staff, and, you know, there is a acute nursing shortage in our country, whether it's locally, statewide, nationally. We all have to compete in that environment. We're seeing changing rural health care reimbursement, especially with some of the Medicare Advantage plans. The Medicare Advantage plans have grown, and they have come to the middle of America. They started big on the coast, and then now have arrived here where the state of Kansas and our county has grown to about 20%. People are choosing Medicare Advantage, and that's very hard to work with. You know, the preauthorization requirements, the bureaucracy that they create to file claims continues to increase, and it makes it difficult. We've seen increases in costs for IT and medical record capital expenditures. We did have a breach back in October where we had to wipe our servers down and start back over again and re-mount our data that we had, had backups. And all those things are getting more and more expensive. You can no longer buy anything anymore in the IT environment. It's all subscription-based. You can't even buy a phone system anymore. That's subscription-based. And so the firewalls and all those things that require constant updating are all based on subscription, and obviously, it's just the cost of doing business. We have benchmarked our operations. I feel that, you know, we are efficient. We are not overstaffed in our areas at all, and we've looked at other places, similar-sized operation, and compared our FTEs to the amount of, whether you do an X-rays or lab tests, so on and so forth, and we score very well to our competitors or to our cohorts that are similar-sized. It's kind of hard to see this graph here, but this, we're part of a Heartland Health Group, which is us and about 50 rural hospitals in Nebraska, and some in Kansas, and this is us here of our inpatient per day. We are the lowest of all the hospitals in our group, and so I feel pretty proud that we are cost-effective, and we're doing our level best to hold down costs where we can. You know, I always like to, you know, not dwell on the, oh, woe is me and all this kind of stuff, but, you know, there's challenges no matter what you do, in what industry you're involved, and there always will be challenges that you have to beat head on and overcome. And, you know, as generally, we, you know, rural providers do more with less. I believe we have a good rural work ethic that we show up every day and do our level best for the folks that choose to live in rural America. I've always said that, you know, we should not have less health care because you choose to live in rural America. You deserve the same kind of health care that everybody else gets, and we need to do our level best to provide that. You know, I think we have fortitude and rural ingenuity. When we show we can provide high-quality care, we've won numerous awards for quality. We've won awards for our patient satisfaction. We've shown that we're cost-effective, and generally, we'll use fewer resources to provide services that we can. And I just, you know, finish up with health care is fundamental to rural America. We, you know, we have a great health care system here, and I'm proud of that we have here. We have very qualified folks here that take care of the rural folks here, and we just ask you to help us continue that, because I think we can all be proud of the system that we have. There's our staff physicians that we have. They're a very integral part of what we do here each and every day, and we're fortunate to have them with us here. We have, you know, very well experienced nurse practitioners that have been doing it for a long time and very well experienced. We're very fortunate to have, you know, the specialists that come from either Lincoln, Nebraska, or they come from Manhattan, Kansas, to see patients here locally. It's a big help. Helps our physicians a lot when doing consults and things of that nature, so we're very proud of what we have there. We've won awards. We've been a top 20 critical access hospital for the last three years, '23, '22, and '21. And to win these awards, you know, they look at primarily three things. One is your quality scores. We do submit our quality scores, whether it's, for instance, hospital-acquired infections is one metric. There are a variety of others we submit as well. They also want to know our patient satisfaction scores are conducted by a third party. They're not conducted by us. And they also look at our cost reports. What does it cost you to provide services? So those three elements, you know, provide that says that we're one of the top 20 hospitals in our nation. There's about 1,300 critical access hospitals in our country, and we measure at the top. And so I think we all can be very proud of that. And we've been a top 100 critical access hospital for the last eight years in a row. And we've, we've been rated as a five-star hospital with our patient satisfaction scores. And right now, I believe, we're a four-star. They did change the criteria a while ago because they felt that the rural hospitals had it too easy, and all the rural people loved their rural hospitals, and they changed it a little bit. So we've been four-star here the last couple of rating periods. Byron Guyes, we backed in 1958. He was a local attorney here in our, in our county. You know, he missed out, or newspaper, I'm sorry. He led the initial effort to get a hospital started here, and we also have the Byron Guyes, Weber Guyes Foundation that still emits funds to various causes in our county. And he wrote back in 1958, "No doubt, there'll be trying times, but if every person remains loyal to the hospital, it will serve as one of the greatest needs this community has ever had and always will need. Let us resolve now to ever work for the best interests of the hospital because it belongs to everyone." And it's still true today. You know, we still have challenges. We're still working every day to improve what we have here, but it's, we're here for the people that choose to live in Marshall County, and that's why we're here. You know, we started the foundation, the people back in '58 started the foundation, and it's a private nonprofit, nonprofit corporation. And at that time, they said, well, they were trying to do a fundraising drive to build the hospital, so they offered $100 membership back in 1958, and you were a member of the corporation. And it's still that way. It's still $100. You can become a member of the corporation, and we have an annual meeting, and we vote on board of directors, and if there to be any bylaw changes, the members would vote on that. And it's been that way since 1958. So anybody can become a member, and for $100, you will get a notice when the annual meeting is, and you can come in. We do an audited financial report. The auditors are here and give the audited financial report. There's a board of directors that are voted on. The president gives a report. The CEO gives a report, and that's pretty much what takes on during the annual meeting. So the ballot question will be this. It says, "Say, shall a retailer's sales tax in the amount of half of 1% be continued in Marshall County, the proceeds of which will be to support the provision of health care services by CMH? The continued collection of such sales tax shall commence April 1st, 2025, and terminate upon the first to occur of the following. Five years have elapsed since the application of the tax, or B, community memorial has merged or been purchased by another entity, all pursuant to State Statute 12-187." Sometimes we'll get asked a question about, well, what do you do with the money? And so it says, well, we use this to support the provision of health care services. So when we buy a piece of equipment or pay staff, we don't say the sales tax money is going towards this. I mean, it goes into our general fund, and we provide health care services with it. We don't isolate it and apply it to different pieces of our expenses according to the ballot So we're asking you today to help keep our pulse strong here at CMH, to continue to do what we all love to do each and every day. You know, we're not going to close tomorrow. We just ask for the support to keep us strong so we can continue to be as good as we can be, and not have to choose between what we have and what we need to do to survive long-term. And so this helps us, keep us heading in the right direction. That's what I have, and if there are any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer questions that you may have. You know, one of the things that have been challenging the last couple of years that's kind of really hurt our finances is our use of travel nurses. You know, we've, it's been a real challenge. It's been a real nursing shortage, and trying to find folks, RNs, to work nights seems to be the biggest challenge right now for us. And we hope that it's temporary, that you don't have to do it forever. We've got the foundation helping us with some scholarships who provide to grow our own nurses from either a nurse aide or an LPN to an RN. We've got a couple of scholarships that we'd love to give for work commitment back to us, and so we hope that, you know, those things will definitely help as we go forward.
Curtis, I have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned that 1.5 million is uncompensated care. What percent is that? Is it 5%, 1%, 10%?
Revenue or expenses or net revenue? Dan, if we have net revenue of about $25 million and 1.5 is uncompensated care?
Yeah, 1%.
Something like that, yeah.
And the other question I have here, it talks about 99% of the cost of care. Could you explain the difference between the cost of care, i.e. the cost report, and what's billed? When the patient sees that they got a physical therapy treatment and they were charged this, that's not the cost of care, that's what is billed. Could you explain the difference there?
Well, if you're a Medicare patient, and say you have a PT treatment and the charge is $100, our cost-to-charge ratio through our cost report formula is 45%. So we would get $45 from Medicare for that $100 charge. So, you know, So, you know, much of healthcare, you bill a dollar, uh, you don't get it all back. I mean, in, in our business, there's really three levels of, well, I mean, there's probably four if you count much of the time, uh, insure, um, if you're a, if you're uninsured, uh, the, the prospect of getting paid is, well, let's face it, zero. Um, so to get, uh, paid, uh, either zero, Medicaid, um, pays here, commercial, or Medicare pays here and then commercial pays here. So if it's a hundred dollars, maybe we get $60 from the commercial, Medicare's going to pay us 45, Medicaid will probably pay us $20, 20%, 20 to 30%, somewhere in there. And then if it's uninsured, we'll probably get something.
Is the other 55% picked up by the second party insurance?
Uh, we will get a, uh, a little bit, depends on, um, how it's applied, adjudicated, um, either through deductible, but usually if they allow $45 and then they'll say deductible is $20 of that, of that 45, so then the insurance company will pay, you know, the $20, or the person will pay $20 and they'll pay, uh, 20 minus 45, they'll pay 30, $25. So the total charge is $45 or the total payment.
So Medicare uses a hundred dollar bill to cost, uh, $45. And then you have a 20% copay, but you probably think with rural healthcare compared to the program, if they apply that to a hundred dollar charge. So if you pay some sort of a hundred dollar charge, you know, Medicare's on, 45, patient owes 20, and so if they have secondary, it might have less sense of liability.
What was the last part? The last thing you said?
I said, if they have a secondary insurance, then it might pay them, otherwise that's directly out of the budget.
On the commercial insurance, the, you said they pay 65, that $35 that is not paid is considered a contractual allowance, which is not considered.
Correct. Yeah, that goes into our contractual adjustment line, it's not included in bad debt or, um, or charity care or, yeah, uncompensated care.
One chart, you showed the compensation of area hospitals, uh, or place center, for example.
Yeah.
It's about half of what you get.
Yeah.
How do they get by, you know, when they can't? What are they doing better or, I don't know, what's, how do you explain it?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of different makeup in the counties, uh, maybe what your uninsured levels are perhaps. Um, I don't think every county is similar population wise. I know there's a similar, uh, verifiable difference between Nima Hah County and Marshall County, if you look at per capital income, per capita of income for that county. And so I think there are differences amongst the counties and their population makeup.
Is the place center that much higher than?
I, I, I don't know what the uninsured makeup of their county is or what they do for uninsured. I guess I don't have that number, um, per se. But I also know they've been getting it for quite a while, you know, for quite a while. Since there are county hospitals, they've been getting it for quite a while since they've been in existence.
Are there grants that can be obtained to help offset that difference? Either federal or state grants, and which ones do you guys apply for? Which ones do you guys get now?
Um, we, we've gotten some equipment grants from the Patterson Foundation, you know, those are.
Everybody's more, kidding, no, no relation at all.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the thing with grants is that you can't count on them, you know, they usually are very specific, specific purpose. I mean, they're not just generally to support healthcare. Um, so they usually are targeted and maybe you get it, maybe you don't. Um, I mean, I, I'd say that you count on that year after year.
How do you determine on the, on, in an impoverished situation, how do you determine which bills are written off for which people? Like, is there a percentage per person, is there, how do you determine that? Do you have a financial structure in place for that already, an application?
Yeah, we have a financial applications where we try to gauge the wherewithal, the ability to pay. Um, it's a percentage of their income, um, that they can pay towards their bill. Uh, we're very fairly lenient, you know, on payment arrangements. Um, we'll work with anybody, um, you know, we rather, you know, I mean, that's part of the reason we're here, we'll work with them. Um, and we have, we do, it's just like, many times you don't hear nothing from them and so your only recourse is to go through the collection process. Uh, but if they would actually, you know, many times if they would fill out an application, they would probably qualify, but people don't fill out, you know, so we can ascertain a, a financial wherewithal that they have or don't have.
Have you ever considered at the check-in process, asking that question? I worked at a county facility in Des Moines, Iowa for many, many years and I was actually the admissions department liaison between the finance administration billing and the different departments. And that was one of the things we did upon check-in. If there was any remaining balance on this bill, would you have any ability to pay? If they answered, well, yeah, probably, then we'd say, you know, come, have you guys considered doing that at the onset of care when they check in? And then have a structured financial platform based on the poverty levels, the different levels. If you make this much, then you'll be responsible for this percent of the remaining balance on your bill.
Um, yeah, we do note that we have financial assistance, um, when they register, if they, uh, if, uh, we have the verbiage up there and so on, so we do have our applications there. Um, part of our financial assistance process, you know, we, we require them to, uh, at least apply for Medicaid, see if they qualify for some other assistance, you know, to make them aware of that, you may qualify. So we want to make sure that they, you know, or if they are aware of that, that they make them kind of go through that process to apply and get turned down. And then we will go through the application, uh, see what their income is financial and then apply the, the discounts, um, based on their income.
Okay.
I mean, we do that.
We are required, as every nonprofit is required, to publish our financial assistance policy on our website, application process on our website. I, us a few years back went through it with me to make sure we were complying with everything. And I've been to presentations with, uh, BKB or other audit firms with other hospitals around and discuss our policy. Our policy has been more generous than most that I talked to, they were saying, no, yep, if you don't apply within, uh, six months of the state of service, we don't, we deny it. And, uh, it is a brake line here or there. Our policy, which was here before I got here, is exactly tiered like you said, but one of the main tiers is disposable income. Here's your income, here's your amount of bills, and so, kind of the way I describe it, and, uh, the audit firm took a while to get this word onto the 990 because it is a little bit different than most other places, but it's the, everybody, as I used to say, everybody in this room is a stroke away from becoming a charity case. It doesn't matter what your resources are. Eventually it gets to the point where your bills are more than your income, if you have a severe thing. Our charity app says, here's your income, here's the poverty level, you're responsible for 50% of the amount over that, anything over that. So we've got a tiered system as your bills get out of hand based on your income levels and it's all published on our website and available to everybody. But the main thing is you have to apply and that's the thing, in this room when I was, there were so many hospitals that said, yeah, if you don't apply timely, you're not granted. Well, maybe the time you had services, you could pay your bill, but it was not out of hand.
Right.
So we retroactively apply it, but you have to apply and you have to, one, Medicaid helps check the, uh, uh, other assets that we may not be able to see. They've got their own policies for verifying that stuff. You might be able to get some money out of it. We've got our policy, we are what we require to support the power of charity application. People either are just overwhelmed with their bills and don't try anymore, or they don't give us that information, that happens sometimes to you. But the policy is out there, as with every nonprofit hospital, we require to publish it on our website. The audit, the audit status, they get us about three, four years.
Curtis, following up on, on this question, you know, the, uh, the current talk right now, the opposition talk, um, concerns is, is basically based on, you're getting sales tax, but you're suing citizens of Marshall County, Marysville to collect bills and I did, I, you know, I.
Well, we wish we wouldn't.
People have a responsibility to pay their bills.
Well, we wish.
I guess what you, what you answered then.
Well, I, I wish we wouldn't have to do that. All we do is need a phone call to say, hey, can I apply for charity or can I do a financial assistance? But when we don't hear from somebody, uh, about their bill, nothing. I mean, you know, we got to treat everybody fairly or the same. We can't say, well, we're going to send you to collections, but not you. Um, so, you know, the process is to treat everybody the same and if somebody wants to set up a payment arrangement, they want to apply for financial assistance, we're more than happy, but, uh, many times it's the people that we don't hear from. And so that's, they end up going to collections just because we have heard nothing. Um, and, but we're here to, and I would say, uh, we've never not worked with anybody that could pay $5 a month, $10 a month. Um, we tried, I mean, we're, we're there, I mean, we're, we're trying to work with them and, you know, obviously if they're taking advantage of us is trying to minimize the payment or we get those too, you know, some of that just throws us $5 a month when we know they could probably do more and so we don't want to be taken advantage of either. Uh, but we're there to help fit in with someone's budget to, you know, help pay off their bill.
And the collection process is exactly defined by the Medicare program. Says you will send six statements, you will do this, you will make all good faith efforts to collect. Um, we do all of that and so it's usually been a year before we send it to a collection agency. Collection agency also returns lots of them that says, this person has no job, no assets, there's no point, or this person has a job, we can garnish there, they have assets that, uh, you were unaware of or they hadn't disclosed to you that we're going after. So the collection agency isn't finding cases where they're not going to get their piece on it either, they've done their diligence before it gets to them. Medicare and our insurance contracts define that, we can't just, eh, let's not try and collect this. We have to in order to stay in control of Medicare laws as well.
Curtis, I was going to bring something up that when they asked about why the difference in what different hospitals receive in sales tax. And one of the things Curtis can talk about is our percentage of Medicare patients compared to private payer would make a difference on how different hospitals can make it more than others. You might, you know, I mean, if you have private payer, that makes up a lot of difference for the shortage of Medicare. And if you have a high population of Medicare, which ours is pretty high here, uh, then you're getting less than you should get and you need private payer to balance that out.
Yeah, I mean, that's true. I mean, we do have a, a big, I mean, with both rural populations, you see, you're 65 and over, and they're the ones that use healthcare services the most. I mean, that's understandable.
Speaking of insurance, what would you say to voters who do have insurance and you're asking for a sales tax? What do you do, what do you tell those voters when you don't accept their insurance? First part of my question. Second part is, I wouldn't agree with you totally on the, you'll get 0% if someone's uninsured because I'm a veteran and don't accept VA insurance and I pay my medical bills on pop.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying at all, yeah.
So what would you say to those voters?
Well, I guess for the veterans, I've, I've, you know, there's just a, a lot of plans and I, I know I have a TriWest, is that TriWest?
Uh, TriCare is for, uh, active duty.
Yeah.
VA insurance is for someone who's retired or on disability.
But there's also the administrator of a TriWest is something that I have on my desk that we've asked to participate with because generally I want to pay trace with all the veterans' plans we have, but there's just a lot of them. And I know TriWest was in the program and now they're, got out of it, Optum got in, Optum now is out, TriWest is back in. And so you have to make sure, you know, I mean, it's, but I want to participate with all the veterans and we have and I know I have.
Like for the veterans' families, the CHAMP VA, you guys actually take that insurance?
Well, if it's one that you have and we don't, I mean, it's an oversight and we haven't been approached either through TriWest, but I, I know we've reached out to TriWest to be, if that's, I may need to visit with you to make sure what exactly name that you have so that we can participate. But, um, you know, I know years ago, um, the, the mission act where the, the veterans could get their care here without having to go to the VA and, um, the VA doesn't want to give up those patients at the end of the day. You really have to fight tooth and nail to provide services to them because they're trying to substantiate their jobs on their end too. And so they have a lot of process in place to be able to take care of veterans and, um, I wish it wasn't that way, but you kind of do what they ask you to do and you try to do your best, but.
But for those who have, uh, outside of government or, you know, just civilian insurance that you don't accept, what would you tell those voters trying to get their vote for this sales tax?
Yeah, generally, you know, we participate with most of them. The one that I, I'm aware of that we don't, um, and it's really a philosophical difference I have, uh, there's a program or a product called AmBetter. Uh, it's an end product, it's on the marketplace. Um, it's supposed to be a commercial insurance, um, but the reimbursement rates are Medicaid like rates. I mean, and anybody can buy that insurance. Um, and I just, you know, with the, the level of service that we do and so on, I just don't feel right that they're offering Medicaid reimbursement rates when they, I know they're getting a government subsidy, uh, for those premiums and they should be in the commercial rate space, not on the Medicaid rate space. So I don't, you know, we've looked at it a number of times because we get calls a lot on AmBetter and I just flat out tell them if they would raise their rates just a hair or a little bit, so it's commercial, you know, kind of a commercial product that pays in that bandwidth, we would love to, but I just don't feel that we should subsidize that, uh, commercial product, um, when, you know, you know, we have Blue Cross but Shield that pays this rate and some other, um, United Healthcare pays this rate and AmBetter is trying to, you know, pay lower rates and so on, so I mean.
The AmBetter is definitely the deal. I would say that as we were kind of talking about this, there's a part, when I prepare for the 990, that list, here's the Medicaid, uh, cost to take care of Medicaid patients and how much we receive from Medicaid and how much we lost from Medicaid patients. And we basically get from Medicaid, uh, between 50 and 65% of the cost, so we basically, it costs us 30% more to take care of the Medicaid patients than Medicaid pays us. AmBetter pays those rates and because of that, they're the lowest price plan on the exchange service choosing. Well, you're choosing the lowest cost, that's because it's the lowest service, lowest, and we don't want to play that all field, we don't want to, we don't want to sign for more money that we're losing, more business we may lose money on because that kind of perpetuates the exact thing about the sales taxes, trying to do what you make up for. Uh, to add to that burden, for that seemed to be a good business decision.
I, I do want to add that I actually called the hospital about the VA insurance thing and Ashley is the one I was dealing with and she jumped on it that day, she was on it, she contacted me back and said things weren't the work, so I want to give you guys props for that. But the other insurance was questioned, you know, I'm on the city council, so a lot of questions come in, that's why I said, but good job on you guys for jumping right on it. Appreciate that.
Like I said before, I grew up in the VA medical center against the city with my dad for my entire senior year, got many mofet appointments, waiting for four hours to be seen. Um, and I can tell you, being on this side, billing the VA, it's no easier to deal with there.
And that's why I paid cash for my grandparents' VA, who'd wait three, four, or five months to get in. Thank you for that.
This probably is under the general category of low hanging fruit as a question. I, I look at things and see if something jumps off the page that makes me not understand how to answer it. And when I looked at 2015 and 2023, and I'm looking at a number that I can't explain away by virtue of anticipated changes in the population, my question is, what happened to meals on wheels?
Um, the county, um, decided to bring it into their realm of, of, of business. We got a, the county, or I, I believe it was county, um, we were doing it for them, they were paying us to do those meals, uh, and then they made a business decision to do it at the Helvington to do it themselves. And then they made a business decision to do it, that the health agency did it themselves, and no longer wanted us to do the meals.
Part of the Agency on Aging Program.
We didn't opt out of it, they took it away. Because if we did not opt out of it, they took it away.
If I understood. If I understood right, when you got the COVID money, you had to be very specific on how that was used, you had to account for that. Why can we not have reports on how our tax money is being spent? That's, I've had a lot of people ask me about that.
Well, obviously, you know, it goes for the provision of healthcare services. So we have not earmarked every dollar that we get for the tax and say, we're going to use it here and use it there. And, you know, maybe we need to, but it's, you know, part of the ballot, how it's written to be used for healthcare operations, and we haven't provided earmarks for those dollars, whether we apply it to salaries, you know, much of the healthcare pie, I think it shows on those annual reports how much goes towards benefits and salaries. I mean, we're largely a people organization, so that's going to be a big piece of the pie. The other part is equipment and supplies that we purchased. We can apply it to the uncompensated care, which would take a big chunk of it. I don't know. I mean, I, it's kind of a question that should be easy to answer, but we provide healthcare with it for healthcare operations. We're not earmarking portions of it for just different reasons.
Well, going on the line, where would you be if you had not had the sales tax these last four to five years? What financial shape would a hospital be in without it? And I'm not here to, you know, my wife and I were talking about it, my own Manhattan set, and I said, I'm going to vote for it. I mean, I don't want to live in a community that doesn't have a hospital. And if my sales tax dollars ensure that, it would be good because I don't want to live 30, 40 miles away from a doctor's office or a critical care facility. I think it'll make some difference. Where would we be if we didn't have the sales tax? Maybe that's one of the messages, you know, there's, I don't know if there's something that the hospital can do to answer some of these sayings, and you can't answer every question out there on social media, have that stuff. But I mean, it's like, okay, here's the question, where would we be without the sales tax? That's what you folks are asking. Community's asking that. So is there a way that you could present, okay, you go back, if you pulled all those sales tax numbers out of those past five years, here's where we can be. So a critical access hospital, would the hospital then be, would it be critical? Be one of those shaky things that say, you know, it's a give or take whether we get the money or not. And so, you know, I guess that's the question I would say needs to answer. Where would you be without the sales tax? Is the sales tax critical for the operation of this hospital, keep it there in the community? Personally, you know, I think it is. You know, I spent 30 years in local government, and not every city I lived in had a hospital, but there were most of them charged to it. I think with the different thing than a lot of other people do because I was involved closely, Madison Lodge, I was down there, we had a sales tax. The city didn't get any, but it all went to the hospital. I don't know, I guess that hospital's still in operation.
Yeah, Madison Lodge is still one there.
And it made a difference. And that was only 100, that was $166,000 a year sales tax is all they got.
What's the new, that's the question?
I think it is, Johnny, it's for the community. There's some way, you got the favor here is say, okay, if we didn't have it, here's where we'd be today if we hadn't had the sales tax.
I'm not an accountant, and I've been in this business for over 20 years trying to understand the business side of healthcare, and it's very difficult to understand. I guess I feel like I have an idea that I am happy to present. My first question though, to Curtis, would just be like, the general financial health of the hospital probably rests on their net assets. Net assets, right?
Well, you know, net assets is taking, you know, all the things of value, whether it's your cash, equipment, the building, minus your liabilities that you have to staff or vacation to, and, and I would say the metrics is like this. I mean, it's not trending up, it is.
Yeah, so like, I used 990 data and it matches up exactly with your new reports. And started in 2019 through 22 because I don't feel that 23s is really set. And you have to take a look at the net assets of the foundation because that's where the loan on the building is held. And then you have to take the net assets on corporation. That's, then you combine them. And in 2019, the net assets of the combination was 6.3 million. That's what the corporation was worth, or I don't know what you want to say. In 2022, those assets are now 10.6 million. So roughly 4.3 million figures. The biggest players on why that was, was because in 2021, we received a $4.6 million grant of COVID money. The other is the sales tax of 3 million. So the unforeseen income that was basically passive in the last five years is about 7.6 million. So if you erase a once-in-a-lifetime epidemic pandemic and you erase the sales tax, of which I'm only counting three years on it, 2021 and 22, you take away 7.6 million from the current net assets of 10.6, you're down to 3 million. So in five years, your net assets dropped from 6.3 million to 3 million. So if it drops 3 million every five years, and I think that's the message that has to be sent, is what, because I always want to know, I go to these board meetings, I've been, I've been on the board, they tell me how much we make, how much we lose, it makes no sense to me. You know, and so I think for my own, like, I don't want to pay taxes either, I don't like taxes. I want to know, well, is this helpful? How critical is it? And even if you took away the COVID money, I mean, that would be, that was 4 million. And so that's a big subtraction. And so, yes, I love Marysville, lived here my entire professional life, don't plan to move, but if this town loses a hospital, I'll go elsewhere. But the people that are here will have a worse quality of life. And so I get it, you know, you want to know where every penny goes, but it's just like I've said on social media, if you get a paycheck from your job and you get money from your lemonade stand, it goes into your checking account. And then you go to Walmart, you don't say like, well, this is the, I'm using this lemonade stand money to buy the meal. You know, you just, it's household operations. And I'm sure they had to delineate COVID funds because you kind of had to like, well, okay, well, we got to, we're going to use these funds to make four more negative pressure rooms because that's for COVID. We're going to use these funds to buy this goofy Ghostbusters light that you put in a room that's supposed to zap the virus away when you're done. All those things were for COVID. And so, but it's, I mean, I think the easiest thing you could do is just say, well, here's our pie of our expenses, and this is how much the percent of the tax, of the sales tax money goes. It's 50% for salaries and benefits, that we use 50% of the sales tax for salaries and benefits. But I think this is what needs to be known, and I think it's accurate. And I think it's, it shows how important the sales tax is.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that. Alex?
We heard the benefit of the, the sales tax and the COVID. What was the cost of COVID? If we're going to extract the benefit from our totals, what's the cost of the COVID? Let's take that out too. Because the expenses need to go down if it costs more for COVID. Because you got benefit, if we're going to take that out, we take the expenses out too. What's the balance when you do that?
Well, you know, we had cost equal what we got for the grant and we spent it. I mean, so again, in your math there, we got 4.2, I mean, we spent 4.2.
Was it, did the, that's all, I mean, did COVID cost more than 4.2 to the hospital? As you said, it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing.
Yeah.
Did it cost more than what you got grants for? Did it cost $5 million if you only got grants for 4 million? I mean, that's a very important part of that equation.
I don't know how to answer that, Alex. What the pandemic cost our local hospital? I know some things that we had to do to prepare ourselves and make our rooms ready, negative pressure rooms, and, you know, we got paycheck protection because people couldn't work for a period of time. They backfilled some revenue loss for us through the COVID. So everything was accounted for that we, to say what the pandemic cost, I don't know if that's a cost that we accounted for or keeping track of.
Don't know if this would answer your question. Let's go to this, the benefit of everybody in the room was, sales tax took effect April 1, 2020. Does anybody remember what happened two weeks before that? The pandemic. So when we sat here and went, we've announced the pandemic, we're shutting everything down, and it's like, huh, that's good timing, sales tax starts now. We were in a, in a room, we're, okay, we've got to shut down the doctor's office, we're shutting down all our patients, we've got to, so we were sitting in the room going, okay, we're going to have to lay off all of these people because there's nothing for them to do, we've got no income. And the World Protection Act came in and said, okay, this is to pay these people. I had to show pay statements that made sure that we didn't lay off a single employee while the business was shut down to justify keeping that money. The COVID money that we spent, we had to buy, some of it was helpful in that it was required that we need to replace. We bought the CT replacement, the isolation rooms that he mentioned, that's a source problem anyway. We had to go through an itemized, here's everything we spent it on, here's my revenue for the last two years, here's the dip and run that are related to this that I had to justify to her question a while ago. And then I was irritated because they arbitrarily set a deadline, said you have to spend this money by June 30th. People were on our roof and they finished the isolation rooms on July 6th. Too late, we're not going to, you've got to give back that money that you've already spent for this, thinking you were going to get it. So it was a very itemized structured deal. The sales tax hit at the same time, almost within a week or two of the pandemic happening that kind of blew everything up. And then I was kind of saying, oh, this is great, we're going to have all this COVID money, it's going to make everything wonderful at the same time the sales tax took over. Everything that we received from COVID, I had to justify and send money back if I couldn't show we spent it. And a lot of it is on equipment. There was certain things that we had to buy, the extra cost of supplies, well, the supply chains were down, so buying masks and gowns and everything else doubled the trip to price. We started buying washable gowns, we got set up to certain contracts to try and get stuff shipped from China. Now, when it first happened, you guys probably don't even remember this, I barely do, but whiskey manufacturers bringing in 55 gallon barrels of alcohol, those two used for alcohol now, because there was none to be found anywhere. It was, so yeah, all of mine was justifying every dime we spent and sending the money back if I couldn't prove we spent it exactly along the line. Itemized and that.
Ashley?
Wanted to add as far as the cost of COVID too. One of the things that would be unseen for COVID as a recent business owner or a person who interacts with the business or employee of any business felt during COVID, the biggest cost of COVID was the emotional cost to our staff because we have a number of frontline staff here in this room who were scared to come to work every day because the rest of themselves, because of the rest of their families, knowing that they were going to be the frontline fighting for this disease. So we didn't know anything about, every single person at the hospital's job changed during COVID. How are we going to learn how to do this? What precautions do we need to take? We have to change every single procedure book we've ever written. We have to completely redo how we're giving patient care. We have to learn how to use all this technology, all this equipment in order to deliver that care. And I feel that the cost of COVID is still honestly ongoing from an employee morale perspective of it took a lot of effort from every single staff member to continue to pull together, change healthcare, and to continue to deliver that care.
So I guess that's my point, is that we can't tell what the total cost was, it was still ongoing. So we certainly can't subtract out the benefits, the $4 million. We can't subtract that out if we can't tell what it cost, and then say, hey, these are even. We can't do that. So I guess I would say the $7 million that looks like, hey, we have a windfall from taxes for a once-in-a-lifetime thing plus the sales tax, $4 million of that can't be considered that $7 million because it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing and it's still ongoing.
The cost, we're still not getting more money.
Right, we should still buy the cost for it. So what's the cost, what's the cost of COVID and what's the benefit?
Yeah, we should be getting money every year.
Yeah.
So if you can't, what's the cost of it?
So the real issue here is when you're talking net assets, which is why Curtis and I looked at this, we looked at net assets, we looked at medic, and we looked at what's the way to best present this. The problem is, of that $4 million, well over half of it is still there as a net asset as it's a CT machine, it's isolation rooms. It wasn't expensed and gone out the door, it is still showing in the net asset. So about at least half of that $4 million is still sitting on the net assets today. So it's not like you're washing them away. If you take away the $4 million, you've got to take away the $2 million in net assets at a minimum.
Jeff?
Well, I'm going to agree with Alex and agree with Al. Actually, I still think that the cost of COVID is still hitting us. I believe if I'm right, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but traveling nurses, we spent $2 million last year, is that about right? Well, the cost of a traveling nurse is twice as expensive as a full-time nurse with benefits and et cetera, et cetera. So in my mind, I'm thinking if we get 1.1 from sales tax and you wonder where that money goes, we could almost draw a direct line to staffing and hiring traveling nurses be because that's what we need to keep the hospital running. So to me, that, it's still costing us, you know? And tonight at the board meeting, we got some statistics, we seem to be doing better, you know, it's less, but right now, there, you could almost draw a direct line between our sales tax revenue and what's it costing for traveling nurses to keep the hospital open. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I guess what I'm trying to go with is honestly, this is a life-changing thing for everybody and every organization. Changes the way you had to think about things and how you had to consider what the future's going to do, and it's not being kept track of except we got benefit, but it's not being kept track of. What else isn't being kept track of? What are we not knowing? What are we not getting because it's not being kept track of? Like, for example, last week we found out that there's a clinic in Agstal that we don't know what the benefit is because they don't keep track in any way of what the benefit of that clinic is. Yet they're spending money on it. They have no clue if it's helping the hospital, bringing money, it's costing money, but we don't know what it's doing for the hospital as far as helping it make money and things to keep from needing the sales tax. And it's not being kept track of. I feel like that we're not getting the numbers that we need to get to make a real decision on if this money is being spent appropriately and wisely.
Clarify what you said to those that weren't there last week.
Dan, can you speak up? I'm sorry, we can't.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
What I clarify for those people who weren't there last week, any business does not make money when it starts up. Axle is new, it's still generating revenue, it's running. We do have internally our own money, which is a tax. No business makes money when it first starts up. They'll apply to them later. So guess we have that information?
You said you didn't have it last week.
I didn't say I didn't have it.
Don't measure it.
You were saying that it was money and I said, yes, it is.
You said you don't measure, I'm going to ask you how much.
Well, I think Curtis answered that last week too because he talked to you about if you have an Axle clinic and they did a bunch of athletic physicals this year, well, then you might give mom and dad, you might give grandpa and grandma. It's going to take a while to see how that's going to benefit you. I'm sure we talked about that last week.
We did, and it wasn't a satisfactory answer because we're not measuring it. They're not, there's no way for them to know if this is worth.
But if you don't have it, they're going to go to Manhattan and so is going to go to Manhattan. Grandma and dad's going to go to Manhattan. Grandma and grandma are going to go to Manhattan.
If you're not measuring it.
What do you, what do you want to bet on?
I want to know what benefit does that bring money-wise to the hospital to keep that Axle, like, or any of the clinics that aren't, you know, anything's not the core to what you need to run the hospital and keep it going.
It is difficult to know.
And if you're not measuring it, you can't manage it.
It's difficult to know because every clinic, whether you look at CPC, Blue Rapids, Wyomar when we had it, those clinics all show a loss because they are part of the CMH system. Because you remove everything out of a clinic that people use to generate money, lab, x-ray, stress test procedures. So you can't look at the clinic's bottom line to say whether something is profitable. And so, yes, there, I bet there's not many people that can answer that question, you know, how do you know if you're generating, like, we've talked about zip codes, you know, like, what, what good did our Wyomar clinic do for bringing revenue to the hospital? Not easy to figure out. There's a lot of indirect income. There's also providing a service, which if you tell me how you can put a cost factor on that. And so with time, you'll see, are the visits increasing, you know, and that kind of thing. But I don't think it's possible, nor do I think anyone ever really can put a, put their finger on how much is having this clinic here generating money for the hospital. I, I don't think it's possible.
Is that, I mean, is that how they decided to build it? Say, well, we don't know if it will cost us or, or if it will benefit us financially, but we need to build this? Is that how it went? I mean, wasn't there a decision, this and bring in some investment?
Certainly. I think there was, I, I wasn't on the board when that decision was made, but I certainly know that there was a desire to have a presence in the eastern part of the county, that it was, you know, you're trying to improve your footprint. And I'm certain that there was a fiduciary decision by the board that says this is a good idea.